Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the October 10th, 2023 Farmington School Board Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, and if everybody could please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is public participation. Don't see anybody here. We will move on to minutes. Minutes of September 25th. I will entertain a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve September 25th. Public session, non-public 1, 2, and 3 as written.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 27th. Public session as written.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Financials.
Hooray.
Hooray. We have Matt here with us tonight, who has been kind of serving as our interim BA. So he's been working on getting us ready to go into budget season and finishing up the end of last fiscal year, so welcome.
Thank you. I guess I'll just speak to you a little bit about what's going on and what's important to keep track of for the board. I just want to start with a huge shout out to the staff that we have here at Farmington School District. They've gone through a lot, both financial, the secretaries I've met, and the administrative team. They've had to learn and do a lot. They've had to accept a lot. They've had to, they've had to learn how to gain the financial controls and a lot of, largely on their own. So I just want to give a huge thank you to all the staff that contribute to our financials in Farmington and just share our respect for them. And that kind of brings us to where we're at. So I know I was contacted in, I believe, August, I think, is when things became fluid. And I was tasked with getting an idea of where the district was at, what it would need to do to move forward financially and complete its obligations to the taxpayers and to the town of Farmington as well. And part of that, as Stacy mentioned, is to do with the budget season, which really kind of starts August 1st. So typically, a school district will take time to close books at the end of the year, culminating, you know, with some final numbers come July or towards the end of August sometimes, depending on how rigorous of a situation it is or what happened during the year, if there's any existential circumstances that need to be taken into an account. And one of the biggest things that we've had to do here, the previous BA departed us, I believe, at the, during the May timeframe, so it left a few months uncovered financially. From an administrative standpoint, again, the financial staff really put together just a great body of work in the meantime. So I was able to leverage that, knowing that the day-to-day was all set, to really kind of start focusing on the three big things that I've identified, which are closing out last year, '22, '23, moving forward on the school district's grants, and the DOE 25, which is a report to the state and the Department of Education, which is the DOE part of our financial status and placement, and they use that to assign a cost per student for the district as a whole. And that cost per student impacts a lot of your funding. It impacts a lot of the way the school does business, so it's very important that that's completed. And then, most importantly, it is a tool for the government and the DRA, the Department of Revenue, to set the tax rate in conjunction with the town and any other governmental bodies within Farmington. So very crucial to have these reports done and turned in. If we focus on the DOE 25, the Department of Ed has built in a tool for the DRA that copies that information onto the form, the MS-24 or 25, and then we file that with the state as well. So I've come with an update on that. We've started the DOE 25 largely to, I owe another thank you to Pam?
Yes.
Pam.
Pam Reynolds, yep.
Pam Reynolds. Pam, a former Farmington alumni, has been helping out the board, kind of everyone in general, to straighten out some books and pinpoint red flag, high, high task items for me that I need to get done right away. She's provided a huge amount of work in keeping the district going as well, and we've been able to use her work to begin that DOE 25 process. So this coincides pretty well with our grants. So grants are kind of a different situation for Farmington. Some of the grants are not in the best condition, but we are in the process of reconciling those grants back to the Department of Ed's approved budget for Farmington and confirming the amounts that they have dispersed to us. So at that point, once we fully reconcile those grants to the Department of Education, we can kind of tie out the end of the year and what we're expecting for money back from the state, and that'll allow us to complete the DOE 25. So the two are kind of going hand in hand. I have a handful of grants left to tie out for the end of the year and carry those numbers on to the DOE 25, at which point we should be able to submit that. And we anticipate there, that process being done within the next week, so seven to 10 days, but roughly, give or take, and then we can go ahead and submit that, so that'll entitle the town to move on with its tax rate setting process as well. So for general financials, I mentioned tying out the end of last year, just because their district was out, without a BA for two months or so. There was just a lot of work left to run through for the end of last year and get started for this year. So there's a couple important items for the general financials, so we have to begin the budget setting process for next year. And Jim and I are in the beginning stages of that. We have to form some templates for the staff and task them with identifying their needs for next year, so we, as an administration, can go ahead and issue a budget to the school board, and then subsequently, we can take that budget to the Budget Committee for Farmington and hopefully have everything approved for that in what we're going to publish to the voters this year, as well as any accompanying warrant articles. At that point, what we can do is really move forward with Farmington in real time, is what we hope to accomplish, and then keep Farmington up to date into the future financially moving forward. So something that I've had to do in my own district as well, so something that I feel confident we can accomplish as a team, and certainly, the school board has shown an intense effort to get this done and done the right way. So thank you to the school board for empowering our staff to get this done and get everything caught up.
Does anybody have any questions for Matt at this point? Why don't we hold off on that for a hot minute?
Absolutely.
And if you can, if you'd like, you can send me a list.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, why don't?
And I can just go ahead and go right down the list. It helps me work a little bit faster-
I can do that.
-in the circumstances, and I can get you the answers you need.
And your Budget Committee meeting is next Wednesday?
No, it's the 25th, so I still have two weeks. Yeah, I have two weeks from tomorrow.
That's a copy for that.
Okay.
That's the checklist that I had some help putting together for problems that are high intensity, middle intensity, and whatever. There's three pages of things, but we thought that probably the best way to do it was within our board folder, to open a folder for that, and then, as things get checked off, initial it, upload occasionally. Now, some of those are going to need some explanation, because they, the, the bad part of what we need to correct happened long before you, and some of it's going to be a little confusing, but I'm available most of the time. I had intended to get that to you beforehand, so we could start going over them, but perhaps the way to do it is to have the board decide how they want to handle that checklist. But there's, there are some very sensitive, time-sensitive issues there, some of which you just covered, like the DOE 25, the MS-24 items like that. Some of those may have already been completed in the week since I finished that. I have one other question for Mac and whatever. TASTA and devices, is that the, the second part of the SRO? We determined that the SRO was actually in SRO 3.
Yes.
We're going to adjust the budget to the new number. And then there were the devices and the software that went along with that.
Yeah, and so, once we, we're going to submit it all together, because it will kind of go hand in hand, and the narrative is written as such. So, once we update the SRO line, we look to Ellen, and she's the, like, approver, you know, it goes to her first, so she'll update that line, and then we can submit the new narrative, which is basically a copy paste from last year for the SRO portion.
Right.
And then we can do the TASTA part underneath that part.
The only other thing with relation to that was the original approval by the board to accept the $145,000 and those was tied to SRO 2.
Yes.
So we probably need to reconsider that vote and move it from 2 to 3.
A motion?
I can make that motion.
Second.
Discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. That cleans up the housekeeping part of it, so. I'm good.
You're good?
It's a great list.
She'll keep you busy. She'll keep you busy.
Yeah, and I think, I think as you go down through the quite, you'll see that this one is going to tie into that one, and once you've done that, the other part falls into place. My brain works in segments.
Right.
So I have to, like, if, if I think it needs attention, I put it out there-
Good, yeah.
-and then we'll tie some of them together. They'll fall into place.
It definitely needs to be done, and I, and I like the way you kind of compartment everything out. You know, we think kind of similarly. I work kind of in both ways. You know, the checklist organization of spreading it out, but also kind of the big-picture type of thing of how it all flows together. But, you know, some of these are definitely high priority items that we're going to have to tackle in the coming weeks here as well. We're going to have to move some of this up in priority. The SRO 3 stuff that you're highlighting is, is, is on our radar as well. I know with SRO 3, the, the reporting timeframe is substantially behind. I haven't fully diagnosed the, you know, of how quickly we can get that caught up, because sometimes what we can do, especially in the circumstances of when we're talking about last year, is kind of combine everything together and report it through the 30th of June, and then bring it back up to date and maybe just a couple reports to the state. So they're not the biggest fan of that method, but at this point, it's, it's kind of warranted, so.
One of the things that I think, and I speak for the board, hopefully, that at a, at a certain point, information about grants stopped coming to us. So we're concerned, or at least I am, and I think you'll see it in there, that we may have spent something out of Fund 10 that was due to come out, due to go into 2. So it, we paid it out of 10. It should have gone into the portal. Once it's approved, it becomes a receivable. We don't know if there's money that never left this campus and went into there. So that, in my mind, is going to have a huge effect on the DOE and the report you're doing, because I don't have an active list of receivables, and we're going to have to take those receivables and tie them back and say, yeah, that was moved forward, or no, it wasn't. Second part of that is, I, the deeper I get into this, it feels to me like receivables, when the money actually came back from the state, it went into the checkbook, but it didn't clear the receivable.
At, at some point, that did start occurring.
Yeah.
As far as I can see, it was more, I would say, after the previous BA. I think that the staff just was like, we got to get the money deposited, we got to, we got to put it into an account, and that's, that's how they were looking at it. So I can track some of it. You know, what happened while he was here is, is, is another story, but I, I do agree with you. I think that we have to look closely at the receivables. SRO 2 and SRO 3 are the biggest ones there. Luckily, again, I'm nothing without the team, so shout out to our administrative staff. For instance, I work with Colleen for the IDEA grants. And so, one big deficiency is I take last, I go into last year's accounting, the books, quote unquote, and I pull up a report for IDEA the previous year, which is a two-year grant, so it's always going through September of, of the following year. But when I looked at the report, not a dime had been reported-
Right.
-into those lines. So that, you know, I was like, I don't think this is right. I'm going to bring this back to Colleen and give her a shot to get this rectified and tell me what the heck those budgeted items were for, and if you can pinpoint where that money is for me, I can take it and put it back in the grant, because it hasn't been reported yet. So, I mean, really, what we budgeted for was approved, so we have an approved budget. It's just that the items that we're spending, you're correct, are being spent out of Fund 10 and not Grant Fund 22, I believe. And I had to go and swap over $120,000 back into this IDEA to recover that money.
Right.
So, I mean, it is time-consuming, so it's not, it's not an easy process. I don't want to make it out to be, but we were able to do that quickly because the staff
Could fill your invoices and-
Yes, and, and so, we have some strong staff here. We just have to leverage, we just have to leverage it and get that money back, you know, for this district. So, that being said, we've made progress. I've probably already recovered over $500,000 from grants that are not SRO grants.
That's going to affect your cash balance, your, when you finally get to closing out, finishing 22, 20, is 23, 22 been done and rolled over?
So, 22 is up to a point done and rolled over. I have to reroll those balances because of the work that Pam, Pam Reynolds has been doing for us. So it's like, kind of like, she's like, I'll take the general ledger, you take the grant books, and we'll, we'll try and meet in the middle. So she left me pretty square with the general fund. I just have to reroll those balances. Now, the good news, though, is that it won't affect cash reconciliation. The cash is actually accounted for when we make the expense into the grant. So if we go and buy a new computer under SRO 3, that's when the cash is hit. This is all about the recording of the revenue in the receivable-
Right.
-as you indicated earlier. So it'll affect, it'll affect our books and our balance sheet, but it's not going to be a huge wishy-wash with the cash or anything like that. We're not, we're not going back in and trying to touch those cash balances and have everyone re-reconcile them all over again. One of the audit adjustments was a $16 impact to cash. Pam made the executive decision to write that off, which-
$16, $16 million, whatever.
You know, if I'm the average person, $16 bucks can be a meal. I'm not saying that. But, but what I am saying is that we're lucky that it was $16, you know, and that's, and that's pretty good, and we were able to find a resting spot for that, where it's not going to just impact every bank reconciliation and budget down the line. So that was the one highlight to cash, and since it's already been fixed, it's not even really on the radar. And I've been helping a lot of the staff sort through their reconciliations and making sure they can continue them, bring them up to date, because I, when I read through the school district's audit last year, student activities and reconciliations, that was kind of a hot point for them. So I wanted to make sure the staff knew how to properly keep everything up to date, and they've been very sufficient in, in both learning, completing those functions, and keeping us up to date with what we've asked them to do.
So we're confident with our July 1 cash-
Cash, yeah. I'm not going to, I'm not going to try and, and get into cash, and those are, I helped Cheryl, I think, reconcile June itself, so I know June, for instance, for Fund 10 is all set. I know we have one left to close out for our food service, but that's post 6:30. So there's something hooking the rollover the wrong way in there, and we have to figure that out. But the, the main priority is Fund 10 cash. That's where all of our money goes in and out of for these grants. Our, our cash flow is heavily impacted by that, so that's how we're funding payroll and everything. That's where we started with, and now we're kind of trickling out into the other funds and making sure the work gets done.
So moving forward, when we get the cleanup work done, I'm feeling that a good mechanism might be in 22, that each SRO, each line has its own line that pulls the receivable forward. I'm not familiar enough with IV.
I'll, I'll, I'll speak to that. So, so what we noticed, what I've noticed with SRO, because the grants are bigger, it's not as much of a problem on, say, a Title II grant, where we maybe only have one activity with a salary line in it. SRO can have various activities with salaries, and those salaries have the accompanying FICA in retirement. So each of those items in our system is controlled by what we call an object code. So the object code is the middle string of numbers. It's five digits long, and that tells us where to orient the expense. So one unhealthy way to account for this is to make one FICA line for eight salaries, because we don't know whose FICA is who. And it just creates a lot of work trying to untangle that when you're reporting it back to the state to, to get the payment from the state. So it's not a problem when there's two salary lines, because you can kind of do a quick calculation and get an idea of where that money may have gone, or it's not as hard to track down two people in the system as it is eight. It's just time-consuming. And when you're trying to move quickly, it's not, it's counterproductive. So, so, so you're, so you're right. I mean, it, it's just, it's overly complicated when it comes to SRO, and there's just some, some serious, serious work to be done systematically as well, to make sure we can properly account for that money. So going forward, we will have it done the right way. That's, that's what I intend to do when I bring it up to date. I don't see another way to do it. I think the best way is probably just to move forward, you know, with the last time it was reported, convert it to the way I would normally do it, and then start reporting that money again through the end of the year, so. And then, the, the back half of that, this is like a two-part answer, is that we seem to have some trouble with accounting for multi-year grants. So we would take a portion of the budget and spend it. It may be a $2 million budget over two years, as opposed to just the $1 million for one year and then it closes, just to give anyone listening an idea. And when, so when we're going into that second or third year of a grant, we're only carrying over what's left in the grant, not the original balance, and then the, all the transactions to date. So we're just, we're just taking a number, it's kind of arbitrary, and sticking it there that we, the grant wasn't tied out the year before, and we're just going to take what was year-to-date, subtract it, and stick that new number in the budget for next year. But that's not the grant budget, because the $1 million you set aside for salaries isn't suddenly $750,000, because you spent 250 of it. It's still in a $1 million budget, and it should have shown a transaction next to it to indicate the prior year adjustment of 250,000, as an example, just making up numbers. But that's, and that hadn't been done, so you can't really tell where you are in the budget, what year you're in in the budget, or how it was accounted for. And then you have all this FICA that gets smushed together, so you can see how that is like someone took a puzzle and smashed it.
Originally, a long time ago, asked for the SRO grants to also be run through 22, and that, I know it's an additional step, but if you take, if you pay out of 10, which is our only payment mechanism, then enter it into 22, then that has to tie out at the end. So, so if it's there, then that mech, that posting takes it definitely into receivable, and the only way, when the money comes in, you accept it through the receivable, which clears it, so.
Right.
But that wasn't it, and we would get like, gee, I don't know, kind of like-
Yeah, that indicates a red flag to me, and that is, if you let it go by one month, that's one thing, two months is another thing, but it, it just snowballs quickly, and then suddenly you're looking at eight months' worth of work, and you don't even know who's FICA is who's, and so on and so forth.
The first balance sheet that I saw, at one point, I, we were getting standard forms, and I asked for bank reconciliation's balance sheet and whatever, and I looked at the first balance sheet and went, oh. Hey.
I can imagine. If you can see the receivables going into Fund 22 governmental receivable line, and we're not, and we're not seeing those clear with deposits-
Yes, yeah.
-that money is not tying out. So to, to your instincts, I'll, I'll give you credit there. I can see why your eyes were wide.
Yeah, it was scary. I'm good.
Okay. We added to the wellness policy. I don't know if you-
Oh, right. Yes, the wellness policy. So as, so we'll get into this real quick. So as part of the district's obligations under NSLP, or National School Lunch Program, the board has to maintain your wellness policy at a minimum of every three years, and that requires you to vote to review it, vote to accept it, and move forward on it. So it, it doesn't require any additions or subtractions unless there's been updates you want to incorporate into that policy, but that's, that's completely up to the board, so I won't speak to that. But if we can have some sort of approval that we're still accepting this wellness policy and pushing it into effect, and that it is the district's policy, that should suffice for the state, as far as I understand.
It was renewed, reviewed in 21.
Good, it was reviewed in 21. When we were looking online, part of the problem was the Policy Committees section of the SAU website did not go past 19 with agendas or minutes for that specific policy committee. So I had a hard time getting the historical. And there was a few people out that day, because I know Cheryl and I, we were, we were trying really hard to figure that out.
So if we're, if it's 21, then we don't need to-
Next year would be the year. Yeah, and I can go ahead and change that on the application.
How do you have that, Mary?
I just pulled it up in our policy folder.
All right, great.
Yep, it's right on the bottom there. Review 5, 10, 21.
And will you send me a copy of that as well?
Thank you. And I'm also, I'm betting that if you go to the minutes of that, because this doesn't actually record the vote on it, it just says policy history, but on 5, 10, 21, those minutes should reflect that we reviewed and voted to accept as normal, so-
Right.
-that's sort of like, that would be the other piece of it for, for this year's 25.
Where would we find those minutes?
Cheryl.
Cheryl knows, all right. Cheryl knows just about everything.
She is the keeper of all of the knowledge, all of the knowledge. Does anybody have anything else? Yeah? Yeah?
Lottick and Sanderson called and want to know if we'd be ready for our audit the week of October 16. So I do need to get in touch with them, because I don't know if I should say yes, still plan on coming, or do we need to change that?
So Cheryl, Stacy and I had a quick meet Friday, and I let her know to go ahead and accept the audit, and I think we did.
Yep.
Yeah, so we must have just left you off the chain. That's totally on, on me, or on us, you know, however. Sorry to leave that on your mind.
Yeah, because he, I think they emailed me today. I don't know if they sent it to you.
Yeah, I was seen on it.
But if we haven't closed 23, that's what they're intending on auditing. Can they, can they audit before finals?
Well, I do want to begin the process. I know Pam got us as close as we could, so that's what I'm going to go off of. And then, anything that they helped kind of steer us on, I'm going to take advantage of. I know in the past, my own auditors have kind of helped, you know, tie up some stuff that's in situations like this that left open. So that's kind of what I'm, I'm hoping for, that little extra push and support from them. And I've been talking to them on the side about a few issues after I was introduced to be kind of the onsite guy for here, and he seems to have a good understanding of what's, what's happening anyways. So I think it's just important to get them onsite, start talking, open the books to them, and then that way, if there's any major issues that they discover, we can tackle it before, you know, we get too far into the tax rate process, was kind of my plan. I didn't want both to happen at once, where we do a bunch of work, and then a mistake pops up that impacts the town down the line. I just kind of want to make sure we have a number that we can stand behind, and, and the audit's a big part of that.
Did you get into the last audit?
I, I read it online, I think.
That was, and that was the one that-
That was 22, 21, 22.
Right.
Yeah.
All the correction.
47.
There was a lot to do with student activities funds, reconciliations.
Those were the ones that I think Pam had done, gone through those.
Yes, because there was some things left open in the audit that she ended up tying out.
Yeah.
So they were able to find a lot of-
We had things like cash balance, journal entry, beginning cash balance, half a million dollars. I'm like, what? How do you do that? Where is it?
Yeah, no, but I think Pam was able to rectify anything that the auditors are going to ask for right away. So that's what I, that's all I wanted to start with, was the getting them onsite, because it could be, you know, something that gets drawn out down the road. getting them onsite, because it could be, you know, something that gets drawn out down the road.
We've got a year.
Yeah.
Not a full year, but.
We don't want to make the D R A math, so.
No.
Just to go to the board, Ken Dickey did stop by this morning and said that the town has pretty much done its due diligence and was looking to see what our timeframe was, so.
Ken actually called me too and asked. And I said, well, we have Mac with us tonight, so we'll, we'll, we'll see where we are.
I was actually working with him not long ago, trying to get everybody on a, uh, oil and
Oh, yeah.
propane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else for friend Mac?
Thank you.
I love the reports.
Yeah.
Your reports that come forward.
Yes, yeah, I designed the grant one myself to at least give you like a bird's eye view of all, of everything I know of recall, you know, regarding grants at once, and that's very, that's what I found is helpful for boards with the grants, because grants are like this thing that are just out there, you know, and they could, they're not part of that, the general reporting of the ledger or anything like that. Sometimes you get the glimpses of their, their revenue, but uh, it's not the same as, as just having that bird's eye view of what's open, when does it do, you know, and where are we with that?
One final thing was, um, the superintendent out of S R three, which we were awarded three point eight million. So, and that expires September twenty-four. So when the budget that we're in right now, twenty-three, twenty-four, she only allotted and budgeted one point one million.
Correct, yeah.
So I'm thinking that, and this might be an Eric problem, I'm thinking that the only way to correct that so that we can spend the entire three point eight is to go through a special deliberative and revote that bottom line.
Now, you are able to do that without a deliberative, as far as I understand it. The DOE approves those budgets, so the district's allocation, you should have voted to receive that all at the same time.
Exactly right.
So you can rebudget at will. You don't have to bring that back to the voter.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as you've accepted the grant in its capacity. What we tend to do is, we have a grant manager. The board still needs to sign off, you know, as, according to your procurement policy and gr- and any outstanding grant policies as well. You have to do it the right way, but you can still create a new budget or add on to the budget you already had or change it, or if you find things that didn't get spent, which I'm sure we're gonna, you can reallocate that up into a new item.
Yeah, I was just concerned that, you know, we're gonna have like two months to spend two point seven million or whatever.
Not if we can help, but that's kind of priority number one, and that's where, you know, S R two kind of has to take a backseat. And that, you know, and we're just gonna have to focus on the S R three and what we can gain from S R two that's already been done, but, you know, in terms of just moving on from S R two and understanding that we're gonna focus on S R three, uh, and really budget out that allocation, so we're improving the district, um, with, with that money, so. Which will benefit the district, I'm sure, for years to come.
Yeah, because we definitely, we have ten months left.
Right.
To and so far, the last time I was in a portal, it looked like we had only, well, she budgeted a couple of million, but we'd only received back like three hundred and twenty thousand. So that says to me, eh.
Yeah, so that one's, that one's, if you look on the, on the grant worksheet I put together, that one, that is the one, uh, that is, I think, outstanding back to last September in terms of reporting, so getting that money back. And that's why it has to be in terms of grants. Once we get through the ones that we can get set up and let them spend, so that way they're uninhibited with that for the, for the new year, that's the one we have to sit down and we have to really focus on. You know, I could even see an, an entire meeting towards that in the future.
Because once we get to know what's been used of that allocation, then we have to start figuring out what's the best use of the other two and a half million. There's a lot of money out there. And it also, at the same time, has to tie to the allowances within S R two itself. I mean, we can't just, we can't go out and say, well, we're gonna buy new curtains or things like that, so.
There, there have been odd justifications for S R, for S R. You'd be surprised what they try to justify from a pandemic. But it, at the same time, you know, there, twenty percent of that grant has to go towards the, the learning loss directly from the pandemic. Uh, and then the, the other eighty percent, um, is for the district to recover from anything else that the pandemic may have had to have us wait on to say, oh my gosh, we never bought new lap, you know, we never bought new computers for the staff, because we had to go out and buy five hundred Chromebooks for the kids. You know, there, there, there could be any amount of things in, in between there, so. At least with S R, we have a fair amount more flex, flexibility, as the justification always relates back to the pandemic. With I D E A, that justification is for special needs. With Title, this is for, you know, under, um, and not, another, I wouldn't, I don't know how to phrase that one, but it's another
Yep.
uh, under, under privileged need type of thing.
Each one is.
Extraordinary, thank you. And, uh, and then you have Title Two, which is to help with staff development. Thinking, because I get the, I get that one and four mixed up, and then, uh, I'm sorry, Kathleen, if you want to speak to Title Four, the purpose of that.
Four is also for students. That's the entire focus, but it's for, more for programming, not necessarily equipment. For programs for students, and then within that, if there are things that are needed or staff that is needed to, to provide those programs, that can come out of Title Four.
Great, so, 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 so deepening and improving the student experience and, and their education as a whole, so. So, I mean, it, those are very specifically tied, where S R is more, what happened to you in your specific situation because of the pandemic, and how can we right the ship, so to speak, so. So I think there's some things, like I said, I could see a meeting or even two probably going towards this, where we sit down, we figure out, you know, as a, as a, as a group here in the community, you know, how we were impacted by the pandemic and what this district needs moving forward in the years to come.
That might be a good place to bring, um, community members in.
Yeah.
Parents.
It's huge, right? I mean, S R is something they want us to advertise as much as claim and spend it. They want the community to know this is a, you know, a federally funded program, that they're helping recover from the pandemic, that it's an investment in our community, uh, and the, and that the fund should be going in the right place, so. You know, community page, I'm, I think we have an S R page or a grant page on our, on our S A U website. And that's something that they, like I said, the advertising of the grant. You know, i- i- it's an incredibly powerful community-changing tool when you have an extra three million dollars. We just have to find a way to use it, and that's sometimes equally as challenging.
It can be.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yes.
Very refreshing to have a, all that information.
I'm sure I.
Seriously, I, even though it's a lot of information, it's good information.
Well, I'm happy to be here educating, answering questions, uh, taking your challenging questions and lists as well. Uh, it's two-sided, so, you know, I definitely respect the work that the board is doing to, you know, I think it's very financially prudent to say, look, this is where we're at, and what do we do about it? This is the first step to any situation like this.
Identify the problem.
Yep. Yeah, all right. So, I mean, if you want to stay for the show, by all means, but if not, if you wanna, whatever you'd like to do.
I'm all set tonight. I'll take your time back in my day, just to go do some work, but, uh, if you guys need anything at any time, if you, if you're hearing anything from your constituents that you need to forward to me, uh, for extra attention, please let me know. Uh, I'll be a great resource for this board, this community, and your administrative team for as much as I can be, uh, and anything that you guys need.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Have a great night, guys.
You too. Unfinished, or any other new business, I should say.
Okay, we, we identified the
Yeah.
J L C F, okay. Unfinished.
Unfinished business.
Mine is just.
I feel like a lot of your items might have just gotten checked off. I don't know.
Time, yeah, lots of that. I do, I do things like on my update list, things like the Little Red Schoolhouse and the parking lot and, uh, DOE. I did take the opportunity to, uh, speak with Chief Orlando and told him that the, you know, the heat was off, that the document was actually there in three, and that the number was gonna be updated to that last one, and he said, as long as the board's happy with that. He also said the additional, what was the eighty that we were gonna use towards the end?
Yeah.
He totally appreciates that, but he wants to bring recommendations to the board and say, um, you know, would, would you guys be okay if we spent twenty grand on this or so? He won't spend it until he's come to us and said, this is what I'd like to do, yea or nay.
Right.
So, so I think that's important.
Yeah.
He said he would sleep better that night.
Any other unfinished business? Back to public participation. Don't all jump at once. Our next meeting is the sixteenth, next Monday, back to Mondays. We have some manifests to sign, and I will make a motion to go into non-public session one under RSA ninety-one A three-two A B C personnel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.